Cue video. Oh, that was really on the line.
Meeting will come to order. Good evening. It's Monday, June 12, 2017. This is a special meeting of the Mercer Island City Council. And we have just one item on our agenda this evening, which is Agenda Bill 5314, Public Hearing on Residential Development Standards Code Amendments. Before we get to that, though, let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Bruce Bassett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Debbie Burtland?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Grous. Councilmember Jeff Sanderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker? Councilmember David Wiesentiner?
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong?
We know Benson is en route. He has checked in and said he's fighting traffic. I suspect Wendy is doing the same. Dan is traveling. So that's the state of affairs for that. As I mentioned, Agenda Bill 5314, Public Hearing on Residential Development Standards Code Amendments, is the topic of the evening. So this is an opportunity for the council just to listen to what the public has to say about this proposed code amendment. The clerk and assistant clerk have set up a check-in or a sign-in sheet. And, Ally, you're going to run that? How -- we didn't talk about exactly how we're going to actually do this. You're going to call people up?
Yeah. So we'll probably just have the first 10 people line up and queue up. And we only have about 17 right now, so -- but yes. So if you are numbers 1 through 10, please come on up to the podium, number 1, and the rest can just line up.
Okay. And as always, the -- this is, please, three minutes for your comments. There's lights on the podium there for you to look at, as well as a timer. Begin by giving us your name and your address. The detail -- oh, we're going to have a -- oh, I'm Max -- Evan, I'm sorry. I wasn't appreciating that you probably had a presentation beforehand, so --
Oh.
Obviously, we're getting goofed up here. Folks, have a seat. My apologies. We'll come back to you. So, Evan.
Mayor, it is --
Yeah?
I only have a few slides I wanted to touch on, just for context to orient us in the process and what we've done to date. And I'll get out of the way of the public comments as quickly as I can.
No, and my apologies for not looking to you first.
Of course.
And thanks for being so polite in just letting that all take its course.
Mayor, council, of course, I'm Evan Maxim. I'm the planning manager for the city of Mercer Island. Remind the council that we started this process really in front of the Planning Commission in October of 2016, after going through a scoping exercise with the city council in July and August, ending in September. As I've noted here on the screen, and this slide likely looks familiar, I showed it to you last week. We have had a number of Planning Commission meetings. We've had a number of community meetings. We had a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. More than 400 written comments at this point, hours of verbal testimony. We've had fairly constant contact, really, with, I think, all of the stakeholders in the discussion, both those who I would characterize as more in favor of change and those who are less in favor of change as we've been going through our conversation with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has conducted, again, this kind of three phases of review. I just want to remind the council of that review process. We started with a very open-ended question of what are our regulations producing at this point? And what types of changes or modifications do we want to see in the draft residential standards that we take back to the city council? Second phase was looking at a very broad range of options. We looked at regulations, certainly from our peer jurisdictions in the immediate vicinity, the Issaquah, the Kirkland, the Redmond, Sammamish, Renton jurisdictions of that nature, and looking a bit further afield. We got as far as Arizona. I believe we pulled some code from Sunrise, Arizona, Santa Barbara, a lot from California, looking at different types of residential options for the Planning Commission to consider when making their recommendation. The third phase of that review process was really looking at that pile of information, if you will, and the policy goal that the council had established in that scope of work, and coming up with our recommendation to the -- pardon me, to the city council for your review, which we, of course, did the handoff last week on June 5. Tonight is the public hearing. And then I believe the city council will really dive into its review, likely on June 19, which is the date you continued your first reading to as part of that study session process. Following the study session, I'll just remind the council, we do have our second reading tentatively scheduled for July 17. And that's the end of what I had to say at the moment, unless there are any questions for me.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I just have a quick question. So, thank you for that overview. And I understand there were some changes from last Monday's recommendation to this Monday's recommendation. Is that true? Has there been some change in some of the language?
That is not true. The materials in front of you are the Planning Commission's recommendation, which was generated on May 17. It was sent to the city council, I believe, right at the end of the month of May, May 30th, May 31st. We're not anticipating generating new draft regulations for the council's review, at least at this point, until you get to your July 17 second reading. My goal is to take direction from the city council on June 19 to prepare that draft for your July 17 second reading.
Anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
And so I just want to make sure that staff recommendations are also in here. I get that we have the Planning Commission input, as well as kind of the benchmarking with other jurisdictions. Is your best information and best guess about how this is all going to work in the recommendation?
There are staff recommendations that were separate from the Planning Commission recommendations. So staff consciously did not generate separate city staff recommendations until the Planning Commission had had their chance to make their full recommendation. I don't think any of the staff recommendations are news, if you will, to the Planning Commission or to the community, in that they are the feedback that the city staff has been providing to the Planning Commission throughout their review process.
Okay.
We are -- there were two in the handoff documents that I provided you for June 5, two recommended, staff-recommended amendments. There are a handful of additional -- a handful may be the wrong term, but there are several additional staff recommendations that you would see in advance of your June 19 study session, which I'll lay out in a similar fashion to how I've laid out the staff recommendation that was included with your June 5. And what I've tried to focus on for the staff recommendation is areas where we think we could clarify the standard or bring it more in line with the council's scope of work, not trying to second-guess the Planning Commission's policy choices, if you will, trying to make sure that we have something that would be appropriately administered moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions? All right. Then Evan, from your perspective, we're ready to go ahead and when we wrap that up, we'll be coming back to you with more material? Or is that the end of it, then?
That is all of the material I had prepared for tonight, unless you have further questions for me after the public hearing.
Okay. Very good. So we'll go now to the public hearing, which is where I was prematurely a few minutes ago. And Ally, let's do speakers 1 through 5. Okay.
One of the few times that I will be number one at anything.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Bassett, and council members and city staff. My name is David Hoffman, and I'm here representing the Master Builders Association tonight. Address is 335-116th Avenue, Southeast Bellevue, 98004. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the significant update to the development code on Mercer Island. I'd like to start by again complimenting the Planning Commission for their expeditious review of the draft code amendments, as well as the hundreds of hours put in by your staff, particularly Evan Maxim. The sheer number of drafts and amendments, two drafts that your staff has reviewed and revised over the last few months, is remarkable. For this community, as it's currently comprised, and for future island residents, it's important that you get this right. As you may recall, last week I commented that, for the most part, the master builders were supportive of the draft code language, although we had concerns related to the reduction in floor area ratio. Those comments were based off of conversations with our members in mid-May, using a version of the code update that did not include all of the Planning Commission's final amendments. The Planning Commission's recommended version was made public on the website on June 2, the Friday before last Monday's meeting. Since last Monday, our architects have reviewed the most recent version and have several concerns, some of which you will hear heard tonight, or you will hear from them tonight. We're working to produce a list of design criteria that would not typically be used in most new construction homes, but could be used to incentivize the building community to design and produce homes that are more context-sensitive and community-minded by allowing a net total of .05 floor area ratio above the .4 floor area ratio in the Planning Commission recommendation, for a total of .45 FAR. The development of these criteria has been put on hold this week as we've been reviewing the Planning Commission draft and attempting to figure out what had changed between the draft we had previously reviewed and the recommended draft. Due to the unintended confusion surrounding various drafts of the code update, I would respectfully request that the public hearing remain open until your next regularly scheduled city council meeting, to provide the community and those who will be implementing this code a chance to fully review and comment on the draft. As I've said before, this is a substantial code update, of which I know you're aware. Some in the community may clamor for these code updates to be adopted with very little review by the council. That would be a mistake. In the end, the members of the council will be held responsible for the code that is adopted, which means you should take the time you need to understand the consequences of each provision. Again, I'd like to compliment staff on their tireless work and thoughtful perspective on this code update. We look forward to working with community members, city staff, and members of the council to arrive at a workable set of code amendments that respects property rights and maintains the character of Mercer Island neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, guys. Good evening, council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today about the city's proposed residential development standard. My business partner Jay and I, with J. Mark Holmes on the island, we live here.
You'll begin by introducing and giving your addresses.
How about Mark Russo, 8020 Southeast 34th Place, Mercer Island, 98040.
Thank you.
My business partner Jay and I, we live on the island, we work on the island, we have 35 people that are staffed on the island. We take great pride in the homes that we've been building on the island for the last six years. And we work very hard to ensure that they are well-built and well-designed, and we take impeccable care of our customers. That said, we know that there are some in the community who have concerns. And it's our goal to work together with the staff and the council to find a workable solution. We've done this intimately in one of our homes that some of you attended last year to understand what the community wanted and what they were scared about. And we made every effort in some of our new projects to listen to what the community had to say and redesigned some of the houses that took effect or took some of the onus on what they wanted in their new house plans and in their neighborhood. And we redesigned them on our short plat on 74th. We want to be good neighbors and strike the balance between building homes that reflect the current market and building homes that reflect the community in which we operate. We believe that if we work together, we can do that. We read through all 88 pages of the most recent updated code language published on June 2. 88 pages. I mean, this is an incredible amount to comprehend in such a short period of time. And we reviewed some of the new changes that were made. We've sent those comments to staff, and they'll be receiving them today or tomorrow. And we'll be sure to share them with you directly of some of our thoughts. I also say that it's taken in the entirety, the full scope of the residential development standard code changes proposed are substantive, and it's really important to get them right, including the feedback from the folks designing the homes, such as the architects, those who own the homes, and those that are going to be building them. We all have to work together. I mean, it is, some of the neighbors want change, some of the people don't want change. We're here to follow the rules. We've done that every step along the way. You know, from the day that we came here, we just followed the rules of how we built houses. And we want to continue to do that with city staff and with the council. It's hard for us as home builders to find time to read through the new code and multiple versions of the code changes on short timeline. And I'm sure regular residents who don't do this for a living will feel the same. I urge the city to take the time and get this right. We are willing to be positive, productive partners with you. And to close, we're appreciative of the time and energy the staff and Evan, the Planning Commission, have put into this effort and look forward to continuing to be partners on this new code adoption. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there a question?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Russo.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned that you, in your development, I think you said on 74th, you amended some of your development to be in more accordance with what the neighborhood feedback had been? Can you give some specifics about what those were?
Yeah. So it was October, November 2015. We had gotten our first responses from some of the neighbors that, when we were doing a three-lot short plat. And they saw the short plat, and in it was proposed, as a short plat, you were supposed to show the area boxes. And the three boxes were like you would see in a normal plat, like if you went to Sammamish, like box after box after box. And the community said, and we voluntarily met with about 40 or 50 homeowners in the mansion house that we remodeled, and we listened. And what they said is, we didn't want the massing, we didn't want density, we don't want these big facades straight up. We didn't want garages front-forward. And so what we did is we hired an outside architect, and we heard, we listened to the changes. The new, three new houses that we're building on 74th, we could have put three garages, three-car garage, followed by three-car garage, followed by three-car garage. Instead, we chose to make some of the, like, two of the cars be side-loaded, so that it wasn't just like this big massing of garages all along 74th. So we listened. And this is voluntarily, this is not, this is before the code, before any of this code got, you know, adopted. We listened to what it is that the neighbor said, followed by what a lot of the neighbors said, that they didn't want the massing. They didn't want there to be one big facade going straight up, and that was going to be a wall of houses. So we said, okay, we're going to indent the houses back. So we indented, so if this is the garage, sorry, this is the best architecture I can do, if this is the garage, we indented it back 10 feet on some areas, 5 feet on others, so there wasn't one big wall. And so that was like, that kind of took away the massing of the front facade. What we also did was we combined, we combined two houses and one --
You feel like you've got enough answers. You say the word. Okay, thank you. It's on you. Yep. Keep going.
We combined two houses with one driveway. And so instead of there being driveway cut, driveway cut, driveway cut, one has its own driveway, but two of them share the same driveway, so that it wasn't, it didn't became, it didn't look like a normal short plat. It didn't look like a normal, that you would go to Sammamish. We live on Mercer Island because we like the difference, we like the differences of the community.
Okay.
So that was what we did. Those were like three or the four things that we did after listening to the neighbors.
And just a yes or no on this one. Did it reduce the gross floor area of any of the site plans?
Yeah. Because we even had a discussion with, when we did that driveway, it was extra-long driveway. Sorry, there was one other, yes. But, so, I know that you didn't want the --
Yes, it reduced the gross floor area.
Yes, it did.
Okay. Thanks for the extra time.
The last thing that we did --
Let's leave it at that.
Was we pushed back the houses, because there was trees that wanted to be kept. And we pushed back the houses so that the trees were maintained.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Welcome.
Well, good evening. My name is George Steyer, representing Plan to Permit. I get permits for people. My address is 7233 Douglas Avenue, Southeast, 98065. So my comments, I hope, are a little original in that what I'm interested in providing is clarity on it. That is what I get in business for. So I want to make sure that the code provides clarity. And so I did provide some electronic comments to you, and appreciate you, anyone who's responded to those. But I want to touch on two specific points. The first one is what's labeled page 81 in the packet, and that's on the code interpretation, the process for doing code interpretations. And so one thing to remember is that council may agree with the current staff in the administration. And I want to say, I want to say that Evan has done an awesome job, in my opinion, of making a very clear code. And he's done a great job drafting it. There's a lot to be said in here. And Allison has provided a summary to everybody, and that's awesome, that's been very helpful to everybody. So we really appreciate that. Staff's doing a great job on that. But again, I just want to clarify two potential, we're focused on two points of clarification. The first one is, as I mentioned, on the, on code interpretations, and saying, staff gets to determine the intent, what was the intent of the code. So I think about, well, when certain code was passed eight, nine years ago, council member El Janki may have had this intent, and council member Mike Grady may have had this intent. And now staff gets to assert what they think the intent is. And I think that may go counterintuitive to what you guys are saying the intent. And what you think the intent of this regulation is, is maybe something different than what Benson says it is. So, and remember, when you're interpreting the code, you're drilling down to where the commas is, or you're thinking about, you know, you're applying it to issues that we're not thinking about right now. And so the intent or the purpose section may not address that at all. I think that it may be good to get rid of that, to say, to give staff authority to say what the intent is. The second one is the expected result. So what one director may say, hey, this is great, that this will be the expected result. A different director may say, no, no, this is good for the outcome. You know, bigger homes is a great, is a much better outcome, or better views is a better outcome. That's, you know, so they get to assert what the policy is, and really, that's what you guys get to set it. And remember, in a nine-year period, there was four directors and five or six interim directors. I can't keep track of them all. So it changes constantly. And the other one is previous decisions. So when you look at impervious surface deviations, by that notion of interpretation, you would say, you would continue to approve impervious surface deviations, if that was the same in the code. But I use that as an example. And then the last one is the net lot area. I think we should be taking out, we should not be taking out utilities out of the net lot area. That's in your definitions, that's on page 86. Clearly, roads should be taken out, or access roads should be taken out. But the intent, I mean, everybody has utility easements. So when I signed up for Comcast Dish Network, I have a new utility on me. So I've got to take that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Alan Hofseppian. I've been a longtime resident on Mercer Island. My parents moved here back in 1974 from Seattle, from a 912-square-foot home to a 3,000-square-foot home, which was the mega mansion of that era. I want you guys to remember that. People say, we want change. People moved here for schools, people moved here for bigger homes, and that's what, what people want now has changed. I want you to look at that 35% to 40% of the people work out of homes now that need office space. You cutting back on square footage and GFA is going to affect those people that are working out of their homes, wanting to raise their families and live on this island. It's going to hurt our tax base, because it's going to hurt, as we did these changes back in the early 90s, we see a significant change where Mercer Island used to be the number-one price point in the western Washington area. Bellevue now has suppressed us at $580 a square foot, and we're at 502. I'm excluding medina and waterfront homes. These are just the regular homes on the island. I own homes here, I went to schools here, my children graduated from schools here. And we want character changes. You can't keep a character. We're not Leavenworth. We're not keeping, I never knew that torched-down roofs were character. I want to also say that there's a property here on the island that was the Davidson property. And it was a waterfront property, 181 feet of waterfront, no bank, 4.2 acres. It was on the market, in the hottest market around, for 863 days. It sold for 300, or, excuse me, $3,675,000. This property had an overlay that the owner of the property imposed on it and had restrictions of what could be done to this property. This property should have sold at $8 million. It sold for 3.675. It is still currently assessed at 7.6 million. I want you guys to look at what you do to these codes, and everything is an overlay which puts more restrictions. And a reminder, 45% GFA is the least of any area in western Washington. I have no idea why we're looking at Sunrise, a community in Arizona in a desert that is primarily built of retirees, and it's a retirement community. So just look at what you're doing. This is very important. It's going to affect our tax base, it's going to affect property values on Mercer Island, and it's going to affect us for a long time. So please be, at all options, look at everything. We are not the best school district anymore, and we are not the sole commute. Bellevue is a community now. Issaquah's not the same school district that I grew up with. They have all gotten better. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can speakers 6 through 10 please line up?
I'm speaker 5.
Yep, yep. No, you get to go. I'm just getting people lined up.
You are well ahead of the game.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Phil McCullough, 10018 65th Avenue South, Seattle, Washington. So I don't know if you were distributed this little package of materials that I brought. I thought I would give you guys a kind of a real-world look at the impact of the various code drafts that have been produced. And since architects are the people, are the end-users of the code, and because we have to understand them and use them, we're the ones that spend most of the time with them. So maybe my perspective is valuable. So you can see that there are two versions, one we call the June draft and one we call the May draft. When I first approached this design project, I was referring to the May draft, which had the daylight plain language in it, but didn't modify the GFA requirements. And I worked really hard to get the house to fit underneath this. If you look at the last few pages, you'll see the sort of blue barn-shaped box. That's the actual allowable buildable envelope, based on the language in the May code. And it conforms. I'm under the GFA, I'm under the building height, I dutifully responded to the desire to provide a daylight plain, so that the neighbors get daylight. On Monday, I, my inbox was another thing, the draft code, and I opened it up, and lo and behold, it's completely different. And so now that house that you have in front of you, which complied with the May code, no longer complies with the June code, for a couple of reasons. But if you look at that house again, you'll notice that it's a one-story house with a basement. It's a single-story house. It does have a roof thing, it's just a thin little roof element, but it's a one-story house with a basement. And if that doesn't qualify under the new code, I think you've got to look at the language again. Because if you are omitting one-story homes, which is what apparently we're trying to create here, then that's a mistake. And so I would say that the main reason why this doesn't comply, or the main reason why the June draft creates a non-compliant condition, is because of the imposition of the 150% surcharge for ceilings more than 10 feet high. I like to direct your attention to the ceiling in the basement of an exercise room that actually is more than 10 feet high, because we dropped the basement floor some more. So it adds absolutely nothing to the bulk and massing of the building, not, zero. Yet it counts against me 150% when I'm calculating it. So I would say, if you are asking me my opinion, and I've done 18,000, 20,000 homes in the past 10 years, in every jurisdiction, the May draft is more clear, and there's language in the June draft, particularly with the GFA over 10 feet high, ceilings over 10 feet high, having 150% surcharge is a mistake. And I'll answer questions if you've got them about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No questions.
There may be folks who want to follow up you, with you separately, or we've got your contact information, but thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Randy Keeler, 3056 70th Avenue Southeast. Lived here for about 45 years, and have been building here for 40, and been doing this a long time, and I, I just kind of want to comment a little bit about the process. And I, I've been through a lot of these code changes over the years, and I, I've been to most of these public hearings, and I've listened to the testimony, and I'm reading the draft, is not, in my opinion, what I heard as the pub, from the public people who were talking about what they wanted, what they didn't want. And I somehow get the feeling that this is some personal agenda, and I, I don't like it. It's, it's like you're asking everybody's opinion, but yet behind the scenes, you're just doing whatever you want. And I'd rather take, rather than a can't-do this and can't-do that approach, to try to do what can, let's do a can-do approach that works for everybody. And this draft is not accomplishing that, in my opinion. It's far too restrictive, and somewhat regressive. You make it more and more difficult for somebody to do anything on their own lot. And, and that bothers me, and I'm hearing that from individuals, and, you know, I know, you know, just being here a long time, I know lots of people. And it's, Mercer Island is not the sleepy town of the 60s, and it hasn't been for quite some time. And, and I have a feeling that everybody kind of wants to bring it back to that. And, you know, that train, you know, went away a long time ago. And the other thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is if this draft is adopted, you know, you're talking about making it effective July 31st. So what happens to an individual who has been working for two months on a plan for a remodel or a new project, and can't quite get it ready and engineered to get in before the 31st? They've spent countless time and money, and now they're going to have to redesign and resubmit. And that's, that's not right. There should be some sort of a grace period here for those people who have been trying to work and, and doing their due diligence, not knowing what you guys are going to come up with. And it's, it's, it's really not fair. I've only got a few seconds left, and the only thing that kind of is, is weird is the noise ordinance. A resident can have a pressure washer running all day long, it's far more noisy than a painter working on a house on a Sunday, or even a Saturday. I, I don't have a problem with reducing the hours, but this noise ordinance ought to be for everybody. Chainsaws for a resident, it's all on the development community that you're, you're trying to, to quiet down. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mark Cohen, 73rd Avenue Southeast. I was going to say, I had a prepared speech, but I have so many different thoughts, I'm going to say them randomly. I'm here under obligation for every six people from the development community.
Elliot, Elliot, you could clock us, thank you.
There has to be one tree hugger, so that's me. So, a couple of things, I like David Hoffman, I don't agree with an incentive for 5% more. I think there's a lot of sweeping generalizations that are going on right now, and there's a lot of polarization, which is really unfortunate, because I think we could come together. There are J-Mark houses that I can't stand. I was part of the appeal on 74th for those three that were going to go in. Yet across the street is a J-Mark house that I, I really like, it melds into the environment. So I think it can be done. The meeting that happened was not, I mean, it was a voluntary meeting, but it came out of a lot of anger. This code came out of a lot of anger from citizens seeing radical change instead of growth that's going to happen. I don't yearn for torched-down roofs, or, or times of the 60s. It's not about that. It's about having growth that is responsible and reflective of citizens. And when you're, when you have a house, and a wall of house goes up right next to you, and it effectively cuts off your view, that's an issue. So I feel like we're, we're talking very different terms here. There are a lot of citizens, as I said, I love trees, but I'll be the first one to say, on East Mercer Way, let's take a tree down, that's going to be a danger to people. So I will encourage you to, to look at, you know, what people are saying, and, and look at the codes. A lot of them are very responsible and very conscientious of citizens. And a lot of them are not great, too. I, I think that actually this code rewrite is not as restrictive as I'd like to see it, in certain areas. And the reason why we have it, and, you know, Mark says, hey, hey, I follow the rules. I don't disagree with that, he does follow the rules. The problem is, our rules are not great. We, when, when push comes to shove, Mercer Island is always the variable. And we're going to be left without a lot of amenities for ourselves. And when I value a neighborhood, I don't value the biggest house there. I don't, I don't move into a neighborhood because of the biggest house there. I move in for the ambiance, for the protection of trees, for, for, you know, designed houses that are, that go with the homeostasis of the island. So I think there's a lot of room for us to come together. And I really, I feel like a lot of the fear-mongering that's been going on is not healthy. I don't think property values have only to do with the effects of this code. I don't think that the apocalypse is going to come because you guys are going to put a code into place, and the schools are going to plummet, and, you know, it, it's not like that. I mean, to deal with extremes is not going to get us anywhere. And so that's what I, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to see more. Thank you. I meant that maybe.
Welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? I'm, I'm plugged into this thing, so. I'm Vicky Harper, I live on the island at 9827 Southeast 42nd Place. And I have a picture here that, you know, a picture tells a thousand words. So I have a picture, and I want to give it to you. This is what happened to me.
Which is, yeah. But, but.
Okay.
Just entered a whole bunch.
And then, here's the quote, but that, I'm just going to read that. So this house was built a couple of years ago, right next door to me. You can see, it's kind of a wall that goes straight up. And I wouldn't have been involved with this whole process, except for this house appeared on my neighborhood. And I was just shocked. The people on the other side, they don't like it either, they brought it in front of the city. The city attorney determined that I, that it was okay to build that far forward, that's still controversial, you know. They didn't want to spend 20 grand to fight the city attorney. So anyway, the thing was built really far forward, and they took out two trees, those trees have not been replaced, you can see, I put a note on the, there about the trees. It's just really ugly, it's an eyesore. And it doesn't help the neighborhood. All the other people in the neighborhood have lawns in front, and the people on the other side, they built especially to fit into the neighborhood. But this person, along with the builder and the city of Mercer Island, said it was okay. And so there's, they have like a five-foot lawn section in front, and it just is an eyesore. So that's why I'm here. And I'm going to quote Dr. Alfred Skinner, he says, "I believe the value of a home depends on open space, a yard to play, and views between and over houses, trees, and gardens. The quality of life in a home is more important than the maximum lot coverage a builder can shoehorn into a lot." Like several speakers at the planning, I won't use the word he used. "I am concerned about my property values, but I, unlike them, I believe my property value is diminished." And that is true, because I actually appealed my property value on, my view was diminished, because this house is blocking my view. And the tax commissioner person lowered my taxes because of my view being diminished. So it doesn't always, you know, the larger homes don't always mean you may get more money, or you have to pay more money, your taxes are going to go up. "I believe my property value is diminished when I cannot see between or over houses, which are oversized. We live in a community, and community is important." That's all.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
It's unusual for the council to ask questions of anyone, so just, we will if we've got the urge to. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm back. David Yusefni, 8214 Southeast 30th Street. He's a father of three kids in a household with two working parents. It's important to us to provide a home environment that supports healthy, active, and family-friendly activities. The current draft of the code that's currently being reviewed by City Council supports these activities by providing an exemption for at-grade pervious sport courts of 1,200 square feet or smaller, and I'm speaking to support the Planning Commission's recommendation to include an exemption for at-grade pervious sport courts. Myself, along with my family and other members of the community, provide a testimony and comment on the importance of sport courts in promoting family and healthy activities. These are on the record, and are reflected in the minutes of Planning Commission meetings on April 19th, May 3rd, and the 17th. And so here's why sport courts are important, and that City Council should support the Planning Commission's exemption. One, sport courts support healthy, active, and family-friendly activities. We're living in a world where kids and adults feel like connecting with each other means liking social media posts, sending emojis, or playing multiplayer online games. What sport courts do is create environments and opportunities for kids and adults to play and connect. Whether a game of pickleball, also invented on another island, Bainbridge, a pickup game of basketball, or a horse, or just running around and playing tag, these courts allow families to use their yards year-round, and as they drain rainwater, and so kids can play without getting muddy. We live in a wet environment, and most yards are pretty wet most months of the year. Sport courts allow for this kind of play year-round. Creating safe environments. Having a sport court allows us to have a watchful eye on our kids, as they and their friends can play in the yard without needing to leave the home, and they're good for the environment. They don't require watering, landscapers or fertilizers. There's no weekly maintenance of a big truck with a trailer or gasoline-powered equipment coming to my house to clean a sport court. And they drain better than pervious concrete, and I brought an example model of a sport court to show you. This is the top, and this is a model that has all the layers. It's empty. Make sure it's closed. And here's water. As you can see, it drains.
I just have to ask, are you a sales guy for these sports?
No, I'm a dad, I have a sport court, and with the new code and the existing code, you can't have sport courts. So I'm here to bring some family, healthy, activity perspective in this, into this code.
And make sure your boys go outside.
Yep, and my kids. I hosted three wounded Israeli soldiers who just had prosthetic braces put on. They haven't played basketball in years, and we played basketball last night, on a sport court. That's pervious, that drains, right? It's awesome. So anyway, I have a couple more comments, if I could just finish. If we keep the code, or don't, if we take this exemption out, lots of homes will be out of compliance, and if someone goes to do a remodel or renovation, they're going to have issues. And so for these reasons, I recommend that you guys support the exemption for at-grade pervious sport courts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can speakers 11 through 15 please line up?
Welcome.
Hi, Jim Hummer, 16 years at 3058 61st Southeast. I grew up in Bellevue in a 1951-era tract house that my parents paid 15,000 or 18,000 dollars for. It's been on Zillow for over a million, and I would say if anybody wants to pay a million dollars and live in that house in Bellevue, the people on Mercer Island should not be too concerned. I'd like to speak in favor of the changes that are being proposed for trees. I'm not sure that 10-inch is an appropriate minimum, but certainly going less than the 24-inch would be very helpful. And outside of the development area, I think you should consider increasing penalties for the removal of trees during the development process that are on either other people's property, or city Mercer Island property. I think that area has at times gotten out of control. I think reducing the accessory structure height to less than 15 feet would be appropriate. Having the fact that we live across the street from a recently completed 30-foot, what was characterized as a gazebo, it's just unbelievable that that was permitted. I would, I think you should consider changing the setbacks on a sliding scale, rather than just going from 15 to 17 feet. And whether you did that sliding scale on the house size, or you did it on a width, that would be, I think, worthy. I will say that for small, non-rectangular lots, you should consider a ground, grandfathering the current footprints. We live in a, on a triangular-shaped lot. During one remodel, we had actually a difficult time determining which is the front of the house, and which is the, the side of the house, and the back of the house. So some of those, some of the setback requirements would affect us considerably. And I'm also in favor of a construction management plan for the large-scale projects, and I think you should consider increasing scale in the pricing of permits and extensions as the time goes out. That last year's permit should be more expensive than the second-year extension. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Winslow, 3761 77th Ave., Southeast. I am elderly. At 74 years of age, I'm certainly in the elderly group. And though, of course, I speak only for myself, I am bothered by what some who claim to speak for this group have said to the Planning Commission, and in some other venues. Specifically, some have claimed that the elderly as a group wish for very lax residential development standards, so that they ultimately can sell their houses, or their property, for lots of money. I'm here to say that I currently live in a medium-sized house on a medium-sized lot, and I really like it that way. If I am lucky, I might have another 10 or even 15 years. And my hope is to live those years as I do now, on Mercer Island, in my medium-sized house, on my medium-sized lot. I am not interested in making big money by selling, though my total assets are probably below those for the average Mercer Island family. More money in my waning years will do me no good at all. I absolutely do not wish to have my house and my property crowded out by huge houses on either side of me. In my waning years, I want the sense of openness that I have now, without tall walls on either side shutting out light, without houses built with a minimum of trees and green space, seeming to shut out the easy flow of fresh air, and without promoting climate change in this allegedly progressive community. Even the elderly care about climate change. In short, I want what I have now, and I really fear losing it. More money will do me no good if I cannot enjoy my home, and the modest, open space around me. In closing... In closing, I would ask all of you to think what you would like as the years go by. Do you want more money? Or do you want to live in a house whose neighbors have reasonably sized houses, thereby giving you the sense of open space, which I think most of us like? Remember, someday you, with luck, will be elderly too.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristin Hart, and I am a resident, I live on 17 Brook Bay Road, Mercer Island, and I did a remodel there, and we just bought a lot on 6025 77th and are trying to build a house. And I just want to state that it is not, it's not easy to remodel or build a house. I see some large houses, and I totally understand the residents who have issues with these, you know, gargantuan houses. But I think what needs to under, I think most of those houses are on big, huge, square lots, and those take advantage that the code has to offer, so they can take maximum benefit. But what I would like to speak for is the misfits, because I think a lot of us, especially as you go south, there's a lot of misshapen in the triangular lot. We have, ours is a panhandle, it has a slope, it's on the water, it's got all these sort of constraints, and by the time you increase all these setbacks, it's really, it gets really difficult to buy a house or to build a house. And in addition, both of our lots were built with covenants in place, and when, I don't think a lot of people realize that, they say, oh, I'm not going to, you know, if I remodel my house, they don't realize that they're, which we didn't, our house was, our first house that we remodeled was already over the setbacks. So we were unable to work with the city to try and, you know, we just couldn't figure it out, and they kept saying, oh, it's easier to knock down your house and build new than it is to keep your setbacks. And so we ended up keeping, we ended up spending more money to keep, you know, the, because we had covenants, to keep our lot space. But it's not, it's really difficult to try and remodel and, and deal with covenants, as this gentleman is saying, to, you know, it's not just the lot size, it's, we have covenants to deal with, and if you keep giving us constraints, it gets really difficult. And I would like to echo that I think it is a matter of supply and demand where a lot of people are moving to this island to, because the schools are free, and they have three kids and they need and desire a bigger house. And, you know, I think that's the nature of it, and if we can find a way to make everybody happy, great, but I just, I just feel like a lot of these covenants aren't looking at the bigger picture, and I ask that maybe we delay to get better discussion, because I think as I've talked to my friends, they have no idea that, you know, what's happening to the, you know, with the codes, and may not realize that their property is going to be infected more than they know. That's it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lynn Hagerman, 3058 61st Ave., Southeast. I've talked with many of you at the beginning of this process. It has been more than 18 months, two years, so there has been an awful lot of time that people have had to be involved. A lot of residents do talk to me. Many community members were very upset about what is the scale of the changes that are happening and how massive the houses are. And many people aren't participating at events like this because they're not paid to do so. The first seven speakers tonight were, had paid interests or make their living through development of some kind on the island. And so people aren't as organized to do that, nor do people think at this point. I think a lot of people have gotten discouraged. So I don't want you to think that it's not getting attention, but you may not be as aware of the community interest and support in these reasonable code changes. So I want to thank the council and the members that started this process and made a charge to the Planning Commission to address the massive buildings and the scale. That's a part of the charge, and part of the charge was the denuding, I don't know my, my language, the denuding of the island in service to private developer interests and, and individuals who want to build. The only place that stewardship happens, so there's individual actions that take place as according to the code, and the only place that community oversight occurs is here with you folks. That's where the community overall look is occurring, not the individual decisions that are collective and have impact on the overall community. I don't think we want to be Bellevue or Sammamish, and so I want to say, keep up with the process. It's been going for a long time, so to those who speak to it not being around for a while, I say, let's just keep going. Please accept the changes that are recommended through a long process by the Commission, and I suggest that there are some things that are still pretty slight. These are reasonable changes that we're talking about. There hasn't been a code update in 18 years on Mercer Island, and to my knowledge, cities look at updating the code every six or seven years. So building height, I think we ought to go to a reduction of 25 feet with an allowance for a pitched roof so that we get some way of having some different character and not big boxes. Floor area ratio, limit the five allowance, 5% allowance to ADUs and ADU to 4,000 square feet rather than five. Landscaping, I support the staff recommendation from 65 Agenda Bill to eliminate the sports court exception and reduce the hardscape percentage from 20% to 10%. And I feel bad about that, but that's individual issues that we need to look at the collective. Trees, cover all the trees with a 10-inch diameter or greater rather than 24 inches. This is already a staff recommendation, and I know my time is up. I'd also like to ask you to limit the construction timeframe to two years with maybe six months. We've just gone through four years of two of the most egregious projects on the island, and four years of daily disruption is too long, three years is long, and right now it's, you're making a reduction down to three years. I would recommend going even further. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Lou Chipert, Seal Bureau Lee, 4212 West Mercer Way. I'm currently a member of the Mercer Island Planning Commission, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission, but I'm representing my understanding of our mandate and the reasoning behind our recommendations. I'm also an architect with 25-plus years practicing on Mercer Island in the surrounding jurisdictions throughout the Pacific Northwest, Western United States, in Europe, and Australia, and this is relevant because in my experience, Mercer Island is among the most restrictive development codes anyplace I have ever worked. This is not always a bad thing, but it is something to keep in mind. My understanding of the objective of the residential development standard rewrite was to conserve, in the living sense of the term, Mercer Island neighborhoods. This amounted to addressing the massing buildings and maintenance and enhancement of the natural environment primarily through tree protection. Our mandate was not to address the style of the building. We, and by the way, for those of you who don't think we listen to the community, we listened and read every single comment that came to us on both sides of the argument, and as an architect, believe me, I walk both sides of that argument. One of the biggest bones of contention among, among the many people, including some who are going to speak tonight, is the desire to see a reduction in height from 35, 30 to 25 feet with a five-foot bonus for gable, two-sided sloped roofs, not shed, but gable roofs. In my experience, this sort of micromanagement of the code results in a cartoon of the code when developers beat themselves up maximizing the allowable envelope. When comparing Mercer Island to surrounding Eastside jurisdictions, we already are, on average, among the lowest building heights. I would like to suggest that the resulting code rewrite that you are being asked to consider is much more subtle and elegant than just reducing the building height. We took some major steps to reduce the mass and bulk of houses through some simple matrix that in no way can be construed as a formal code. And by formal code, I mean that, that provides prescriptive formal responses, so gable roofs. We reduced the gross floor area from 45 to 40% with a 5% bonus for, as you know, an ADA or an ADU. We reduced the interior volume so that double or multiple height spaces are part or in whole counted in the GFA. We included variable side yard depth both for lot width and building height. We eliminated the downhill height, downhill 35-foot height allowance and tied it to the existing or finished grade, whichever is lower. We eliminated lot coverage and pervious surface deviations. We limited the GFA accessory structures.
Ask you to wrap up.
I know, I'm almost done. The Planning Commission was unanimous in its support of maintaining the 30-foot height limit, unanimous. And I think because we were so careful, I think this is so because we were so careful in attempting to understand all the above-described limits and their ultimate impact in mitigating the menacing scale of potential new development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can speakers 16 through 20 please line up?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Carolyn Boatsman, 3210 74th Ave., Southeast. I'm a new member of the Planning Commission, but I'm not here representing any of their views. It's been a long road to get to this, this point, and thank you for requesting this process, and thank you for your support. There are many positive changes in the draft code and, which I support. I encourage, I think there are changes needed in the draft still. Don't quit, see it through, no, I hope you don't take any major delays. Probably the open question hanging out there, how could we get this far and still have major changes that some of us are seeking? And in my view, that islanders, many islanders would be disappointed and even disillusioned with the draft code that we already, that we have at this point. I don't think it's anybody's fault, I think we're driven by the calendar. I think when you keep, when you're putting together a puzzle and you keep redesigning the pieces, it's a bit hard to see what the picture is looking like. But right now, we're able to put the pieces together in this code. I think the picture is not really a very nice-looking picture yet. I think some more work is needed on those pieces. I think the key issue is the height. By reducing from 35 to 30 on one side of the building, it was a 14% reduction on one side of the building, it was a good change, but I don't think it's enough of a change. Mercer Island is a remarkable forested, quiet oasis, incredible, located near huge metropolises on either side, just by, you know, a hop, skip, and a bridge to get there. But now, without more substantive change, this character is destroyed. I know that's a strong word, but I really think it's the right word. I do urge you to come up to First Hill and see what's happening up there if you haven't yet. I do hope you will please use your authority to stop this destruction. The reduction of 30 to 25 will really make a huge difference, along with the other changes that we already have. I don't agree with others who have spoken that this is legislating design. I think it's setting a Mercer Island appropriate height limit, and it's allowing a, you know, a little slack for somebody who wants to add a peaked roof. I'm also very opposed to the reduction in parking, covered parking from two to one. I think this is off-mission in a process designed to preserve the character of Mercer Island neighborhoods. It's a decision that was made with no data. We do not know that there is a strong trend in reduction of car ownership on Mercer Island. That's not been considered. So I really think that when our streets are lined with cars, we will really have, suffer a loss. Tree protection, I think there's very good provisions already in the code, but we need greater protection for trees outside of development. There should be a permit required to remove trees 10 inches or larger and replace those trees, slow down the removal of trees, limit the removal of trees to three per year outside of development. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Barbara Schuman, 3434 74th Ave., Southeast. I'd like to start by talking about what my life is like right now in our neighborhood. Between our house and the corner of the block, which is, we're kind of in the middle of one block, and between our house and the corner, which would be 29th and 74th, there are seven constructions going on, and it's been going on for, seems like close to a year. I have an unfinished letter composed on my computer with photographs of what a typical day is like for me to get out of my driveway and up to the corner. There are, I've been counting every day at the J-Mark construction site, which is just two houses up from me, and it's on both sides of the street. There's four houses right there going on all at once. There are between 10 and 12 or 15, just vehicles. That's not counting the big equipment, that's vehicles. What has happened is that the side of the street that has the three-part short plat that has been in a lot of contention, okay, they haven't really started building the houses there yet, but they're using that, that big lot that's being divided into three lots, they're using that as an open-air warehouse. That's my words, my words. It's an open-air storage facility warehouse for big equipment. There are huge holes, enormous pits to fall in, and sometimes full of, with a little water in them, and also for huge piles of dirt, and one time it was a pile of asphalt. I don't know why you pile up asphalt, but I think that's what it was, I'm not sure. Sometimes, I counted four or five massive shovel diggers in storage on that lot. Now, I'm, I feel sorry for the people who live right next to that, but that's on one side of the street, that's right across from another house that they have there in, kind of, it looks like it's getting close to being finished. I like to take walks with my three-year-old grand twins, and we walk up there, those kids, we're walking up past, through all of this. The twins will run over to one of these giant pits that are protected by this little yellow ribbon, and it's terrifying. It's dangerous for kids, and we can't have a normal life in our neighborhood. So, okay, I wanted to talk about this extreme disruption that's going on, but I also want to say that I'm also somewhat elderly, and it's my heartbreak.
And I'm going to note that you're at the three-minute mark, so if you have just a sentence or two, we'll be happy to.
All right. It's my heartbreak to see Mercer Island becoming this enormously crowded place, and I want to encourage reduce the height of houses from 30 feet to 25 feet with an additional five feet for a peaked roof, reduce the hardscape allowance from 20% to 10%, and save the trees. Require a permit to remove trees 10 inches in diameter or larger, and require replacement of trees removed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Molly Mahoney. I live at 3024 60th Ave., Southeast, which is right across the street, straight across the street from that 28,000-square-foot huge thing that's going on the water. They combined two lots, two half-acre lots, and now, I just have a little, this, that's my morning.
So we can't hear you if you're here, we can look at this, but you won't be.
Okay, it's every morning, and that just takes in front of my front door. Not from the street.
So go ahead back to the microphone so that your comments are captured, if you would.
So it's about 65 feet away from my front door, this 200-foot-wide courtyard by Marriott, and it has, you know, it's, somebody brought up, this is a one-story with basement, okay? You can clearly do a one-story with basement on Mercer, I don't know who brought that up. But I mean, it's, there's got to be, and this is now a year and a half in, there's not any siding, there's not any drywall, there's nothing going on to really look like it's bringing back, going to be a house at some point, and there's nothing in it's bringing back, going to be a house at some point, and there's nothing in this, I've been to the planning meetings, nothing that we talked about to preserve neighborhood character. This is a block with houses that were built in 1908, and now we have this monster across the street. I expect we're going to have cement walls, and, you know, it's just, there's, and there's no, nothing being done to alleviate the impact it has on the people that have to live through it. This is a commercial property. I brought up last time I was here, this project is bigger than the clock tower building. And it's right on what is a lovely waterfront street, the only waterfront street on the island where you can actually take a walk, and there's the water, and it's really, there's got to be, this is 7:00 in the morning this crap starts. Every day, we had geothermal drilling done, eight weeks, they drilled 13 holes, 350 feet down, that took eight weeks. Every morning at 7:00, we're listening to drilling that made us keep our windows closed and stay out of the yard. And, you know, if a house is too big for regular heat, it's too big. And we're not even anywhere close to being done, and there's no, nothing that anybody can do, and I'm here to see what can be done and what must be done for the people that really are the victims of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome to you. My name is Dan Thompson. I live at 7265 North Mercer Way. I've been a resident since 1970, I know all of you. I'm a lawyer who understands land use inside and out, and I don't do it for personal profit. I think I should just give a little shout-out to Evan Maxim, because if you guys think I've been tough on you, I've been pretty tough on him. Now, I've written to you, this draft code is disingenuous, and it's going to allow larger houses than exist even today. And as I told you, a residential code is, always depends on the exemptions and the definitions. Don't buy the headline. So, I'd like to just go back to a statement from, two statements. One, houses on Mercer Island are not more expensive because they're larger, because you can go to unincorporated King County if you want that. And I always liked Dan Graus' line that a good residential design code doesn't profit those who wish to sell and leave Mercer Island, it protects those who want to stay here and make it their homes. Now, turning to the, I've written to all of you, and you know this, the last time I was here, we wrote a very good appeals and permitting ordinance. And I bet you, you look back in your careers, and you will think that is some of the most important legislation you ever did, and this is going to be the same. Three things I've already written. If you reduce the parking, covered parking requirements from two to one, you are going to spend a fortune building sidewalks in residential neighborhoods. This is an idea that comes around regularly, usually from a new planning commission member, without understanding the history of it. Don't touch that. You've already done Northwood, you don't want to do First Hill. Number two, accessibility. Now, I bet the rest of you haven't read the Fair Housing Accessibility Requirements, and you'd be surprised to find out they're only about two pages. They apply to Section 8 and government-subsidized housing, which are small flats, usually studios, that need minimum turning-around location. They don't need 5% or 500 square feet, they are designed for units that are less than 500 square feet. Don't give a 5% increase in GFA for that. Most importantly, read my emails on the ADUs. You are going to rezone our neighborhoods as far as density and number of houses, which Mayor Bassett, you said, was the specific thing to prevent through our Town Center Density Code. You're going to allow on a 10,000-square-foot lot, a 3,375-square-foot main house and an 1,125-foot second house that's going to be able to be rented, and before you do that, I think you have to take that to the citizens and ask that, is that what they asked? Do they want every lot to become two houses with a rental? Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we, Ally?
We are waiting for...
Good evening, I'm Charlie Wick. I live at 7422 Southeast 32nd, and I guess my thought in listening to all the speakers tonight is that there seem to be two vastly different groups here. There are kind of the owner-investors who have lived on the island, I've been at my house 30 years now, and then there are the developers who want to come in and do what it is they do, which we need, but with some controls. And I would just say generically, I'll come down on the side of the owner-investors for, save some trees, the bigger the better, and try and restrict the imposition of the size of houses, however that is done, and I'm not going to get into any sort of specific recommendation, but I do live next to three of J-Mark's newest on 32nd Street, and I'll segue there into parking. If you try and reduce the number of parking spots on properties, you're going to force cars on the street. In the 30 years I've lived there, there has never been anyone parking on the block that I live in. Now there are three cars there all the time, two of them have two wheels on the driving surface, one of them parks that far from the nozzle of the fire hydrant that would save my house, were that disaster to become necessary. And so I'm not really too impressed by that aspect of it, and those houses do have lots of garages, which you see when you, when you drive down the street. I guess I would say I'm a little disappointed that there aren't more engaged citizens, but I'll throw my lot in with my 74-year-old fellow islander here and kind of validate what he said. As I age in place, I do not feel that pumping up the value of my house to dump it has any appeal at all. I'm more interested in quality of life issues than I am a money pile. And being next to J-Mark, I've been offered a pile, and it wasn't persuasive, so I have some credibility there. I guess the last thing I would say is that with the street parking issue, as a cyclist, I find myself getting pushed off cycle paths onto the street on 72nd and on West Mercer Way. I mean, it just happens. When I drove here tonight at First Hill Park, there was a really nice-looking Mercedes park right on the cycle path. Now, it's easy enough for me to swing in the street, I don't have a problem with that. We have runners, we have aged people with walkers in the neighborhood, actually, and we have mothers with little baby carriages, and we're pushing them into the street. And I don't think encouraging more street parking and absent any enforcement, which seems to also be the case, is not a prescription for safety or happiness of a lot of users in the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have any speakers for 20 or 21, so speakers 22 through 27, please line up.
Welcome.
Good evening. Hi. Suzanne Scone, 283460th Avenue Southeast. I'm your ex-planning commissioner, and so I'm just here talking about, a little bit about the process and encouraging, I think I'm encouraging city council to respect the process that your planning commission went through. I know it was frustrating for the public because we would propose something, it would change, they'd respond, it would change, it would respond, you know, it was a process, and isn't that great? You know, it made it difficult, but it made a better product in the end. And while I don't think it's a perfect product, I think it responds to the needs of Mercer Island, and one of the things I learned on the planning commission was that there are as many perspectives on this issue as there are lots, lot sizes, slopes, different conditions, different kinds of neighborhoods on Mercer Island. Some of you live on the south end, your neighborhood is very different from First Hill. And I think the product, the proposed regulations that we're recommending, find a balance between, among all the neighborhoods. So these regulations have to work well, they won't work perfectly, but they'll work well across the board. I think, I don't know if the gentleman from J-Mark was trying to, I don't know, I just thought his comments were very supportive of what the planning commission is recommend, has recommended. He gave a demonstration project that being sensitive to lot size and the community can actually result in a smaller FAR house or a GFA house, and that can be built. So obviously, the going from 40 to 35% GFA is viable. So I guess I would just encourage you to adopt the planning commission's recommendations. Obviously, you're hearing some good comments tonight. Please take the time to sit down with staff and your planning commissioners, there's always something that's not quite right in the public hearing, and it gets promulgated, and it's misinformation. Please take the time to educate yourselves about every one of these, apply your own filter, and believe that your, the process is, has a good outcome, you know, that your planning commission did a great job. So, in closing, I just can't help but say, bulk is a four-letter word. Beware.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Hewitt-Speth. I live at 8320 Southeast 34th Street. And I'm going to talk tonight about the 8,400 block of Southeast 37th Street. The majority of it, the houses have been torn down, and new big houses have been built. And the sad part is, my friend who lived in one of those houses that's been torn down is gone. And he is gone because the developer continued to knock on his door. I feel that this is unethical behavior. He is now gone, and his house is gone. He grew up on Mercer Island, living in the house that his father built, which is now gone. And I don't like seeing this. I think it's unethical. I don't know how many other people have had their doors knocked down by developers and harassed into selling their houses. I think this needs to stop, and I think we need to be aware of it, but most of the houses on that street are going to be new houses, and I feel very sorry for the few that are trying to hold on to what they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shawna Yusefniya. I live at 8214 Southeast 30th Street, and I'm kind of in awe of what you guys do. This is only my second time here, aside from when my kids came to see what happens here. So this is actually really interesting for me to learn. I'm not actually here to talk about house sizes, although I appreciate the passion, and I'm learning. I wanted to just echo the comments of Speaker number nine. I wanted to talk about what it's like for me. I grew up on Mercer Island, left for 17 years, and am now back to raise my kids here, obviously, because of the schools and because of the community. And when we moved into our house, we loved it, but we realized that our yard was unusable, it didn't drain at all, and so we decided that we wanted to put in a sport court. So our sport court's been incredible, it's kind of been a life-altering thing for us to have as a family. We spend all of our rainy days and non-rainy days out on the sport court playing with our kids, and they've improved their physical activity, their mental health, they're not sitting inside playing on their devices, and now we're learning that some of the code has been changed to impact our sport court. And it now drains. We have learned, and my husband's done a ton of work on this, that there's, through these previous sport court systems, they drain 18 to 38 times better than pervious concrete, based on all the studies. And so it would just be a heartbreak if we didn't have our sport court, and thank you for listening, and thanks for all your hard work.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Dennis Su, 41, let's see where I live, 84 Crestwood Place. I don't usually write myself. I'm an islander since 89, and practicing architect since 71, and still doing that. And this is not my speech, this is my homework. Every time I see some major land use changes and code change regarding the buildings, as a practicing architect, and I always thought, hmm, now, somebody's slapping the faces of those who wrote the original ones, or they must have good reason to say, those professionals who put their hearts and minds into writing the current zoning land use code must make big mistakes, or cannot foresee the future of the city and the world growth. So, either that, or the city official must accept the fact that what they've been practicing or enforcing is outdated, and I guess that's why we're here, to face the changing worlds with the current demand. My point is, many of the speakers already covered all the pros and cons, including some soft stories, as in, most public hearing will end doors. My point about this new change is, seems to me, what triggered the action that created this, not unrest, but created this emotional response from the city, seems, is based on the current growth path of all the major houses being built by developer names several times in the past speakers. So, in order to solve the problem, it's not a fixed number of 40% or 45% of the footage of the lots, because lot sizes varies, as many people suggested, and given the size of the island, they are in different funny shapes. So I would suggest to adopt a design review committee to review certain proposal, instead of simply just stick with the fixed number dictated in the proposed code. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Grab your pen as you go there, if that is yours.
Mr. Su?
Yes.
You dropped your pen.
It's not mine.
Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, four weeks in Europe, eight countries seeing development, kind of honed your perspective. I thought I was going to have the time to thank the mayor and deputy mayor and all the rest of you for your hard work on I-90, but I'll let that go, and thank you for all your hard work on this. But on both issues, I think, sometimes I don't get it right in the articles in the newspaper, I know how hard you all work, and I appreciate it. I'm Robert Thorpe, 5800 West Mercer Way, that's both my home address and my office address, as of three months ago. I'm a certified planner and instructor in real estate economics that runs that program in other universities. Just some brief comments, I sent you an email, so you have my salient points. I want to thank you for coming this far. I do share some of the concerns of the master builders as a former director, and I just want to make some quick notes. I have a concern about the added complexity of obtaining permits. There was a big push by the planning director in the 80s to get rid of the mega house. We went through this, we thought we had it all settled, we're back seeming like the issue. I think in some ways, this is reacting to maybe one or two builders who were able to obtain some permits through staff members that are no longer here, and there's been a little bit of an overreaction. I think the code works, I think what the planning commission done is a good step, take what the master builders did. I have concern about expanded non-conforming uses. A $5,000 or $10,000 addition becomes $40,000 by the time the homeowner pays for it. Height issues, overly complex setbacks. Particularly concerned in the neighborhood of I-Dorebel, Groveland Park, and I know East Seattle and others are that way, that this may create unbuildable lots. It also may again create non-conforming houses, which will create inability to get refinancing. I know I'm working on a loan now for 20% of my house, and I'm having trouble getting a 20% loan on a house on West Mercer Way. So think about what that's going to be for somebody trying to do that. The CEOs require a great deal of professional cost to get time and done. Landscape, I have some real issues. I think you're I think you're going, I helped craft the Design Commission, you're taking what you've stayed away from, is design review on single-family houses, you're opposing that layer, which will require a landscape architect, and almost like a design review you do for a public project or for something in the town center. My conclusion is, town center downzone with no contract rezon meant you're really not going to build any apartments there. You can't afford to do it without plazas, without, with three stories. You've got to have a contract rezon. So is this going to price moderate income families out of the market, including teachers, city staff, and business support people? Make remodels and ADUs too costly, make senior retirement housing difficult to upgrade, would impact their costs. So think about what the problem is. Is it one or two builders that got some deviations, caused a lot of stir on Fairstale, and are you doing an overkill? So you're on the right track, but scale it back, so that the answer should address the magnitude of the problem. There should be a clar nexus. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Phyllis Chang. I live with my husband at two-nine-eight-eight Seventy-Fourth Avenue Southeast, in a J-Mark-built house. And I want to say, first of all, that I want to thank the Planning Commission. I've had the opportunity to participate and listen and talk at some of their meetings, and it's, any amendment of any legislation or codes is difficult beginning, and it's a complex process. As someone's mentioned, it's like a puzzle, there are many moving parts, and there are compromises in everything that we approach, and you'll be deciding on. So I think they've put in a ton of work, been a very open process, yet I and many others do believe that there are still some serious flaws or deficiencies in the code. I will try to submit some written comments later to be more specific, but that's the first point, despite all the hard work. Secondly, First Hill, where I live, I hope that the council will keep in mind, to many of us on Mercer Island, we think of it as a microcosm of the future of the island, that is, the rapid development there is a healthy thing in many ways, but bringing many conflicts or conflicting interests and desires, and frankly, seeing a lot of large houses piled into relatively small lots. My house, which I'm very happy and delighted to be in, thank J-Mark for that, does fall into that category. So we, my husband and I, very much understand the great and growing concern of many Mercer Island people. First Hill is a microcosm, that is, it's the intimation, or you see it already, of the future of many other parts of the island. There are great, there are many neighborhoods, situation is different from neighborhood to neighborhood, but this will also happen, certainly, or surety, as some of our leaders say, in other parts of Mercer Island. So I urge the council to keep that in mind as you think about the changes to the code. Third, I don't think any of us who are quite critical of what's been happening and are urging strongly changes to the code that would tighten up in some ways, some ways, not all, building of these large structures, are anti-development. It's really important to stress that. But there needs to be, we think, a better balance struck between the rapid, and in some ways, almost legal but almost pell-mell, building of large residences, again, I'm a beneficiary, at least temporary one, against the longer-term and even the midterm future of what the island is. And we all urge all of you, and us together, to think collectively, what we, those of us who reside on Mercer Island, those of us who have no vested interests except perhaps our piece of real estate, but also no other economic interest really, in the short term, to think about, you as the stewards of the island, we urge you to have some vision and to be bold. You cannot go back. When houses are built, they can also be taken down, but we've seen in many cases how difficult that is. So it is better to be bold now, and to think about the midterm, not to mention the long-term future of the island, and what we want our neighborhoods to be like. And by mid and long-term, and I'll finish up now.
I'll ask you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. That's ten, fifteen, twenty years. There is no going back if the development continues at a pace like this and at the scale. And thank you again. I will submit some written comments about specific portions of the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jansen is our last speaker, signed up?
And the best dressed, I might add. I just came off the tennis court, guys. I had to cut short to get here. I want to make three points here. The first one is a philosophical point about--
And if you could, pardon me? We know you're Mr. Jansen, but full name and address.
Eric Jansen. I live at ninety-four twenty-eight Southeast Fifty-Fourth. I just moved there about seven months ago, but I've been a resident with my family here on the island for nineteen years. So I'll make three points. The first one is somewhat philosophical regarding whose rights are we protecting? The second two are very tactical, simplicity and enforcement. First of all, I'm in real estate. I try to profit from the ownership of property and improvements. I can hire attorneys. They can be here any day, all day. I can come down here myself, any day, all day. I can come anytime I want. I have the money and the resources to continuously address the city. I can buy as many permits as I can afford. But I also live on the island, and I believe this code needs to enforce the neighborhood's rights. We live here, it's our home. We're passive. We work during the day. We can't hire attorneys. We can't be here at all hours. It costs us our family time to come and do things like this tonight. We need the code to stand for our rights, philosophically and realistically. We will be overwhelmed by the budgets, the bodies, and the belligerence, you've heard it all evening, of developers. I'm a commercial developer. I know both sides. I like where I live, and I want its character to remain. So please, philosophically, the code needs to be our rights. Let the onslaught attack them, but don't give them the way in the code, please. Two points, tactical. Keep it simple and enforce the simplicity. The current code, as you're getting from the Development Committee, is way too complex. Examples, net lot sizes, I mean, seriously, net lot sizes, look at that code, it's crazy complex. Second example, hard surfaces. I live on a ravine in this island. Here's the way the world works. Gravity pulls water through the soil, it percolates away, you don't get fast-moving creeks, and it doesn't erode the basins. The city doesn't have to pay half a million, a million dollar per basin. But we don't get percolation if we have too many hard surfaces. Keep it simple, guys. Third of all, enforcement. I have taken the Planning Commission and the permitting letter for fifteen years. I read it. You know what the most common, I could give you the stats, but I don't have them, the most common variance? We all know what it is. Active area. You walk in here, developer gets a five percent deviation just for asking. It's ridiculous. Enforce. Second of all, tree code. When someone cuts a tree, enforce it. When someone has a wall you don't like, enforce it. Enforcement, enforcement. I can't tell you how many times, and I'd be happy to share the details, your development desk knows me, of cases where I've come to them with filed complaints that never got followed up. No documentation. Oh, we're sorry, Mr. Jansen, there's no documentation there. I guess that's the end of this case, huh? Time after time after time. So my three points. The first one, philosophically, the code must stand for people's needs. Don't let it get eroded in slippery slopes.
I'll ask you to wrap up.
Don't let it get eroded in slippery slopes of losses every time we readdress something. Two tactical things. Keep it simple and enforce the simplicity. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Allie, we're--
Who was the last speaker that was signed up?
So at this point, we've reached the end of the list.
Well, wait, I'm--
I understand, I'll be happy to have you speak, but I want to just offer the same opportunity to anybody else who's here. If you'd like to and haven't yet, I'd just like you to go and flag Allie or Ellie and let them know that you would like to still do that. So is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, you'll be the last speaker.
All right, Tom Ackerman, two-four-two-seventy-fourth Avenue Southeast. Three years ago, when I brought up this issue about residential development to city council members, there were a lot of other things going on, and there still are. The reason I brought up the issue is self-interest, really. There was a house behind mine that was foreclosed on in two thousand and six, and there were a lot of issues around that property. I have lost track of all the documents that have been circulating in the community relative to this, but I'm a very large property rights advocate, and I also want to preserve our community. And what I noticed in the property around my house is that there was a developer that started to take advantage of the city. First of all, I didn't get notification. The city said that I received notification of the development. They mailed out a postcard with two special needs children. You have no idea how much mail comes to my house about DSHS and medical bills, so it's possible I got it, but there was no way to prove it. So this development continued, and this particular property, the developer brought in illegal fill dirt. I complained many times. Evan inherited this, Scott knows about this. And then there was a hundred-and-twenty-foot ground sequoia in the middle of a lot. And it was zoned for two, it's now been approved for three, and they've done it within the law. I can't complain about the developer's actions, but what really bothers me is there's been no enforcement arm. So when I asked the city about this fill dirt, has anybody done any sampling of the dirt itself? Well, no. How do we know it didn't come from a gas station and they dumped it in there? Well, we just assume that they did it lawfully. Well, if they did it lawfully, I submit, they would have gotten a permit to dump the dirt in there, and the city's already determined that it was illegally placed there. So as a homeowner and a landowner next to this property, I've had no recourse, really. So I just really echo the gentleman who spoke before, that we need to have, not just code, but just make sure that the code's followed. And we do need to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And I think that the only other thing I'll add is this parking requirement, and I don't know where it landed, but one of the things, being involved in many of the community activities lately, is that we're trying to, in neighborhoods, we don't necessarily want to push the cars to the streets, so anything that we can do to provide ample parking in the neighborhoods will reduce stress and funneling effects in neighborhoods. And we don't want kids darting in and out of cars. So thank you for all your efforts, and I have to say that Evan has been very responsive, as has the community advocate, Allison, over there, on some of the issues, but their arms are tied too. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I think the question we have to wrestle with immediately is one of whether we're closing the public hearing or continuing it to the next meeting. And looking to you, Julie, for a minute, I'm curious about what our agenda looks like for next week. I mean, the purpose of putting this meeting tonight was to not fill a council meeting in which we have a lot of work we have to do, also with public testimony, and turn it into a marathon. And as we've said, late nights don't, you know, we don't work at our best when it gets late into the evening. So what I'm curious is what the recommendation would be from city manager and what the council's opinion is about whether we continue to entertain comments at the next meeting, or whether we call this the end of the public comment period for this.
So, Mr. Mayor, it looks like you have your residential code development continued first reading, but it's designed as a study session, so from five to seven. And as you know, typically, you don't take appearances until after the regular business meeting. This isn't a legally required public hearing, you are doing this as part of the public process, so in essence, you can continue to take, according to Allie, public comment at next, at your next meeting. In fact, you'll be able to take it at the next meeting, as well as the July seventeenth meeting. So it's really, I think--
You're making a good point. We're not in a legally required--
You're taking this extra measure to make sure you hear from the community. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I think maybe there's a question out there in the minds of some people as to whether or not there's a difference between speaking during a public hearing and then speaking during a general public appearances. Does it make a difference to the record or in any other form?
You are, every person's comments during the public hearing or during appearances are captured in the minutes. The official public hearing for this ordinance was in front of the Planning Commission, and so there are different rules regarding that, and how comments are received and how they are recorded. At this point, all comments tonight, all comments at the next couple of meetings, and anything you receive by email or letter are all considered just regular comments to you as the city council as you are deliberating this ordinance. So they are captured in the minutes if they are here speaking.
Okay. So I think because this is not a formal hearing, then we just close the public comment period for this evening, and we'll work out exactly what the public comment opportunities look like at our coming meetings.
Yeah, I would say it would be during appearances at the June nineteenth meeting, because we won't have another item after your study session regarding this. So if people want to talk, they would need to do it during appearances.
Okay. So that's noted. Okay, so I will close the public comment period of this meeting, and as Evan had suggested, there was an opportunity now, if the council wished, to go back to questions for him. And so let's have him come back up, and are there questions?
May I?
Yes.
So Evan, are there any more tweaks or edits or updates to the recommendation that you're going to do between now and next Monday? Or is what we have what we get, and any further input we will consider you're not going to codify?
We are putting together the packet for June nineteenth, your council packet for June nineteenth, right now. In that packet, you will not see new draft code. We're still using the Planning Commission's recommendation to you as our code document. There are two policy recommendations that I've provided in your June fifth materials, and there are some additional staff recommendations, which will be described at a policy level for your review on June nineteenth. The thought on the, and can I, may I elaborate just a little bit more for explanation purposes? The thought is that on the, at the June nineteenth meeting, there's probably two things that would be useful to the city council at least. One would be an overview of the Planning Commission's recommendation, and those areas where that recommendation has changed between your initial study session on May eighth and what they gave you for your June fifth handoff. And those changes, there were a number of things considered. My impression is that those changes were not quite as stark as some of the public comment that you've heard tonight, but that's my impression, and is perhaps not reflective of the community. That overview, I think, will help you get your bearings as to what the regulations say. Along with that, I've been talking with makers about a peer review of these recommended changes, which I'm hoping to have for your June nineteenth packet. I'm getting a little nervous, because I'm down to within a day or two, and I don't have it yet. So I will give it to you as soon as I have it. That's kind of the first part of that presentation. The second part of that presentation was really, there are a number of recommended edits. Some are coming from the staff review of this Planning Commission document, as I mentioned earlier in the evening. These would be edits that are intended to improve clarity, administration, or more closely aligned with the original scope of work from the city council. There are also recommended edits, I think, coming from some of our council members. I think it's fair to describe these at a policy level to the full council, and if you provide direction, as you often do in your first reading, as to amendments you want to see in your second reading, I thought a table form of this for the policy discussion would be useful for your June nineteenth. I was intentionally trying to keep us out of the specific code language, for the most part, because I think it is a very long document. Eighty-eight pages in front of the city council, if we go through page by page, I think we'll be here far more than the two hours we have allotted. So I was trying to keep us at more of a policy level. Of course, if the council says you've recommended a tree permit for a ten-inch tree, and it really should be a twenty-four-inch tree, we can look at that kind of edit, too. In the background, there are some non-substantive changes. I'm not a perfect typist or writer, so there are certainly typos in the document at this point. There are technical edits that we would want to look at, and I was not intending to bring those to the council's level of review on the nineteenth. We will flag these for your review at your second reading, July seventeenth. So the goal here is transparency, and to try and keep the council discussion more at the policy direction level, rather than at the page-by-page level. Does that help? Clarify?
Sure. Actually-- Sure. Actually, pause for just a second. You know, I've seen some of the public trickle out as we've been talking. I just want to issue a thank you to everybody who's been here and offering comments this evening. We appreciate it. We know you have other things you could be doing as well, and the fact that you've all come out and had a chance to speak to us is much appreciated. We're probably not going to go much longer, but you're welcome to stay or go if you'd like. You keep going.
Okay, so Evan, during the town center work a year ago as council, had questions, and we got public input, and kept drilling back to you and Scott. Can we have that similar kind of comprehensive document at the end? Do you remember that document, Scott? So, you know, Benson asked a question, or Dan asked a question, or I asked a question, you kind of captured it in one document, so we could all benefit from all the questions and details that were back and forth, and sort of you guys getting, you know, 100 different questions from the seven of us. If I know Benson's asked a question, I don't have to ask it. Is that possible, or is it kind of too late in the game for--
I certainly, I was not here for the town center discussion, but I'm happy to recreate that document.
Oh, sorry, it seems like you've been here for years. Okay.
In a good way.
Right. And then, one last question, and I'll yield the floor. So we have a comprehensive list of recommendations, right? And one that is particularly difficult for me is the tree policy, and I know our planning commission chair said they got it good enough. I worry about the unintended consequences and the misfits, for example, on the trees. I live down on East Mercer Way, not First Hill. So I'm wondering if there's a possibility of maybe saving a piece of the code eventually, if there's enough of a majority on council that wants to take a piece of the proposal and punt it back to the planning commission, or save it for down the road, if that's a possibility? Or is this sort of a one-size-fits-all, do it all at once kind of thing? So what's the feeling of how that would work and likelihood, given your experience and having done this in the past?
Well, so to answer your question directly, I don't think the council is in any way obligated to adopt all of the recommendations for the planning commission, and you could remand a chapter, in this case, it would be Chapter 1910, back to the planning commission for further review. If you, as a council elected to do that, I would request that you clarify the policy concern that you would want the planning commission to evaluate. I would observe, as someone who helps administer the tree regulations, that I think there's probably two things, two things to consider in making that kind of decision, at least two things. One would be, I believe the current recommendation from the planning commission is better in terms of administrative clarity and likely the outcome than the regulations you have now. It could be clearer, and this will be part of the staff recommendation to you as part of our June 19 discussion. The second would be, it is a rewrite of the chapter. There will be unintended consequences, and I would tell you, having done this for many years now, we will want to reevaluate that regulation at some point in the future to see if it is producing the result that the council desires. I would tend to assume that a follow-up check, three to four years after adoption, would be appropriate on something of this nature. You know, certainly if there's an error in the policy analysis that the planning commission conducted, I think that's really where I would recommend, or if the council elects to rewrite the chapter entirely, I think that's where the remand back to the planning commission is more appropriate.
All right, others. Seeing none. Julie, anything from you? No? I does feel early, yes. Okay, well, I'm going to--
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting then, and thank you very much, Evan. Thank you very much to the public, and we'll see you all again next Monday for a study session and regular meeting.